Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for joining us this evening. Our first item on the agenda is our budget presentation and I'll turn it over to Kathy Mayer.
Good evening, everyone. Budget development continues. The BOSI's commitment forms were released late last week, so I'm working with administrators to firm up special education, technology, CTE, PTEC, and other service requests. Negotiations are ongoing with our Office Personnel Association and a few of our ancillary staff that have employment agreements expiring on June 30. As of today, two cleaner positions have been added to the budget, one day cleaner for the high school, and one second shift cleaner to rotate between buildings to cover as needed. Analysis of the transportation budget continues. Since this is our first year accounting for all of the transportation expenses, we are reviewing transportation costs not related to personnel in an attempt to budget as close to actual as possible. There are still some contract transportation costs as our in-house staff cannot accommodate one of our special education runs and the various McKinney-Vento scholars that we transport from as far away as Schenectady. The first draft of the proposed budget is up 2.48%, or just over $1.8 million. This is a very fluid number as BOSI's figures have not been updated and have a tremendous effect on the budget as a whole. On the revenue side, the tax cap is 1.77% or $284,300. Preliminary state aid figures from the governor's office show an increase of just over $650,000. However, I expect this to change as corrections to the district's transportation expenses have changed since the release of the governor's budget. I'm hopeful that at the April meeting, we will have a state budget so that aid figures can be finalized prior to adopting the 2526 budget. A transfer from the Debt Service Reserve Fund will be utilized to offset the local share of debt payments, and fund balance will be used to balance the remaining difference between revenues and expenditures. While the district has a healthy fund balance, administration and the district's financial advisors are reviewing the long-range plan as it relates to expenses and use of fund balance. A proposition will be presented at the April meeting for the purchase of two wheelchair buses, a plow truck, and a suburban. This funding will come from the School Bus and Vehicle Reserve, having no impact on the tax levy. A second proposition will also be presented at the April meeting for the purchase of musical instruments and classroom furniture. Again, this funding will be from the reserve that was established last year and will have no impact on the tax levy. Nominating petitions are available for anyone interested in running for the school board. Candidates need signatures from 100 eligible voters and they must be turned in by 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 30. There are currently three vacancies for terms running July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2028. Incumbents Robert Curtis, Kevin Cusel, and the position vacated by Vincent Salvion are up for reelection. Petitions may be picked up in the business office weekdays between 7:30 and 3:30. This year, the library tax levy and election of their trustees will be on the school district's ballot as a separate proposition. There are four trustee vacancies that run for five-year terms. Petitions may be picked up at the library and they will have further information regarding their budget. The district will also be adding the funds remaining from the 2020 Capital Project to the Debt Service Reserve Fund to offset the cost of future debt service payments. There was approximately $1.9 million remaining. That's all I have tonight. Any questions?
Did you say the library is on our...
Yes.
Yes.
On our...
You remember they presented in here and the feedback we got from the board is if we can help them do what we can.
Okay.
Just make sure we do a good job of making that clear to the community that those are two separate entities, two separate boards of directors, things like that.
Same ballot or different ballot?
Same ballot and be voting in the same places, not at the library.
It'll be like a proposition, you know, the two propositions that are separate from the budget.
Okay.
Hopefully it works out.
Right. Any questions?
All right, next item, we have a proclamation for our elementary school PTA. Before I read off the rather lengthy proclamation, I just want to thank the PTA for all their work. You guys...
Make them come up.
I don't want to embarrass you. I'll make you come up, yeah. I'd like to thank the PTA. You guys have been doing a wonderful job. We see all the stuff on your Facebook page. I follow that. You guys have a lot of activities going on in the school and I'm sure the community really appreciates all the work you're putting in. So, thank you. I'll read this up. Now you have to come up, sorry. "The Board of Education of the Glover'sville Large School District recognizes the exemplary partnership with the Glover'sville Elementary PTA, whereas the Glover'sville Large School District extends its deepest gratitude to the Glover'sville Elementary PTA for its unwavering dedication to supporting and helping the scholars, your tireless efforts in fostering a strong school-community partnership, and our immediate impact on our scholars' academic and personal growth. Your advocacy, volunteerism, and commitment, you help create opportunities and inspire learning confidence and success. We truly appreciate your determination to make a difference in the lives of our scholars and we thank you for being a vital part of our school community. We have resolved that the Glover'sville Elementary PTA simplifies the altruism, dedication, and cooperation required to help our scholars and realize their personal potential." And now, I hereby resolve that the Board of Education of Glover'sville Large School District, part of the city of Glover'sville, takes due note of your dedication that Glover'sville Elementary PTA provides to the scholars of the Glover'sville Large School District."
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thanks for the you guys do.
Thank you. Thanks for the you guys do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to take that button.
Thank you.
Their name is Ronan?
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. We can switch. I've never got to watch you run immediately. Again, just thank you guys so much for all the work, not only yourselves but the entire elementary PTA. The work does not go unnoticed. Next item, we have public comment. Anyone here for public comment this evening? Go ahead. Come on up, state your name.
Hi, I'm Margie Fagel. I am the president of the Glover'sville Teachers Association, so I am here representing them. This weekend, we have an amazing event being held for our community. I want to make a huge thank you to Luke Horton and Jen Lemery, who have spearheaded our clothing and book giveaway. Starting Friday night, many teachers, staff members, student volunteers will be setting up for the event, laying everything out. And then Saturday morning, starting at 9:00 a.m. at Boulevard, at the large gym, we open the doors to the community to come in and look through the donations of clothing and books. There's been shoes, there's been backpacks, there's been so many things that our generous staff and teachers have donated to give back to our community, and I just wanted to give a huge shout out at what a wonderful event it is and look forward to seeing our community members there. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, moving right along, more discussion? We have the minutes from the February 3 meeting. Anyone have any comments or questions on those? Motion to approve those by Kevin, seconded by Sharon. All in favor on that? Anyone else have anything else for board discussion tonight? All right, moving right along. Then we'll go on to the superintendent's report.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. Before I get into it, I just want to recognize a couple of things on tonight's agenda. Our donation of winter coats and snow pants for elementary-age students from the Knights of Columbus. This is the second donation that organization has given to our scholars. I think there's roughly 12 sets of new coats and overalls or bibs, I don't know what you call them, but snow pants. So, we appreciate their generosity for our scholars. Also on tonight's agenda is three retirements. We got Leonard Jones is a cleaner after 22 years of service. We have Ed Coller, elementary teacher with 35 years of service, and Lisa Hetnick, middle school math teacher with 30 years of service. So collectively, 87 years of service with those three staff members that leave in our organization. We thank them for their service and wish them a long, healthy, happy retirement. Also, I want to recognize the resignation of Assistant Director of Student Support Service, Gillian Riley. Gillian's been with us for three years, I believe, and has taken a position in Queens very similar to the one she has with us. It's much closer to home, so we wish her the best. She's done a great job for us and wish her well in her new position. I just want to thank Kathy for her quick recap of the budget. Kathy does a great job every year. Our budget is always, in the seven years I've been here, it's always strong. There's not been a lot of volatility. I think it speaks a lot to the management of our funds, both through the business office and obviously through the Board of Education, historically speaking, to ensure that we're in solid financial shape. Our fund balance is strong and any upheaval that does come, I think we're going to be in a good position of weather. So, I tip my hat to Kathy. She's done a great job for a long time for our district, keeping us in good financial shape. Our school community has repeatedly supported the management of our funds in the annual budget vote, and we hope that they will continue to do so. So, thank you for your work, Kathy, and I'm sure more clarity will come as we understand what Albany plans to do. And one last thing, had some questions about federal funding with the talk of the Elimination Department of Education at the federal level. If that happens, a lot of the money that we get is codified through Congress. So, that money would just come through New York State, similar to what the American Rescue Plan money did in grant funds, or excuse me, block grants that go to state ed, and New York State would be responsible for continuing to allocate those fundings. So, you hear a lot of hand wringing and skies falling that we're going to lose the $3.5 million or roughly what we get from federal government. We do not anticipate that regardless of what transpires in Washington. Any questions on that? I'm going to turn it over to Chris and possibly Brian right now for an elementary trimester proposal discussion. I think I sent to the board the proposal, and well, the pros and cons of moving to a trimester in the coming school year. So, I don't know if the board members got time to read that, but I ask Chris to be prepared to speak to it, and that's what you have in front of you. He may cap Brian to weigh in as well.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening, everyone. So, we have the need to revise our elementary school report cards as a result of the need for alignment with the next-generation learning standards, as well as to align more closely with our CKLA reading series. And throughout the fall and winter, when we've been meeting with the committee members as well as the principals at the elementary level, one of the things that came out of that is the desire to move back to a trimester. We had trimesters from, I believe it was 2007 to 2016, and moved back in the direction of quarters because at that point in time, around 2016, 17, some quarterly interim assessments were established and wanted to get back into the frame of administering those to align with report cards. We are no longer using those assessments, so the desire to provide our scholars with some more time to establish growth and demonstrate that growth, as well as to not inundate scholars with assessments throughout the course of the school year. The desire to move in the direction of trimesters again arose, and Brian graciously put together with the input of his colleagues the pros as well as the cons of moving to a trimester schedule again. You'll see that the pros vastly outweigh the cons. And also, I believe you have a copy of the other local districts as well as regional districts who are on a trimester grading schedule. Mayfield moved to trimesters when I was a secondary principal there. I don't have a great deal of details about that. I do know it was a successful and effective implementation and something that has been appreciated. You'll also see Johnstown in Amsterdam and HF and BOSI's, as well as Burnhills, Scotia Glenville, and East Greenbushmore regionally in the CAP region, BOSI's. One of the things that I also think is important is that we will still maintain parent-teacher conferences in November, mid to late November, as we've had historically for the past several decades at least. So, nothing will change in that regard. We see Parent Square as an opportunity to provide parents with, parents and guardians, with ample opportunities to hear about their scholars' progress and achievements in the classroom. So, nothing in the regard to moving from trimesters to quarters brings about a great deal of trepidation. So, Brian, is there anything that I'm missing as far as pros and cons in some of those discussion items? I do know that you, at the PTA meeting last Tuesday, you did bring that up and the feedback was largely positive with that as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to just a couple of thoughts here. First, as Chris pointed out, this is part of a larger discussion with a report card committee, and I just think it's important to point out that there's representation from each of the elementary schools on that report card committee, and there is a consensus among that group of teachers that trimesters are probably in the school district's best interest. Part of, one of the charges of that report card committee has been to create a document that is more help, it's helpful for, as a communication tool for our parents, right? So, the schools can communicate better with parents about their child's progress. Moving to trimesters, there's a lot of information on the sheets that are provided to you, but if I were going to boil it down into just maybe three points, the first is really longer periods of time that are provided during a trimester give a better picture of student progress, and that is particularly for those students that are in need of intervention and support. So, those longer periods of time allow for that progress to show through, and that's really what we're aiming to do at the elementary level, is to show that progress and to show the growth. Another is by shifting to trimesters, it aligns better with our current diagnostic tools such as M-Class and iReady. Those are also given, given kind of triannually, and that is best practice at the elementary level. And finally, like Chris was saying, it does align better with CKLA and Ready Math, but I will say this too, it is independent of those curriculum resources. So, if we ever did change a curriculum resource, we wouldn't have to jump and look at going back to quarters or staying with trimesters. It really is just best practice at an elementary level. We had a good conversation with the PTA at the February PTA meeting about trimesters and the new report card. Some of the, I think the feedback from parents was that they do trust the school district to provide the best reporting for their child's progress, whether it be trimesters or quarters. But we did get some great insights that we're bringing back to the report card committee. Some of those include, and probably this is the most important, is how can parents help their child, right? So, they want to be able to see what is it that they can do to support their child. Of course, that's what we all want. Some of the things that would help them to do that would be to have a knowledge of where is their child in comparison to other children. I think that kind of helps because often we get a score of 1, 2, 3, and 4, and there's little context to that for our parents. And so, one, the other charge that we have with the report card committee is a parent guide. So, how do I better understand this report card and how can I use it as a tool to help my child? Another great one, a great piece of information and feedback that we got was they, some parents really like the charts and graphs. Those come with our reporting from iReady and M-Class, and we have those available for parents, but it does show like graphically their progress of their child, and they found that to be very helpful. And finally, we talked about maybe the use of the comments section to be really important, especially if we're trying to pare down the current report card. We want to make sure that those, the comments are robust and really give a good, clear picture of what's happening in the classroom. That's going to help parents to better support their child with their learning needs. Any questions that I can brush for the board or help them?
So, is this going all like to the staff, only their staff like on a general?
It's really, it's been among the discussion with the committee itself. I think in each of the faculty meetings, we've discussed it, but not saying that it's like happening definitively or not. The feedback I know at Boulevard has been positive with this, the idea of trimesters, Sam Torteris.
Very positive at Torteris as well.
So, I do think the vast majority, if not all, the teachers in the elementary program are in favor.
Any concerns from the board? I just, I think it makes sense. I think our elementary staff has a great job communicating on a daily, weekly basis with parents. I'm not worried about the quarterly, the loss of one official report on student grades. I think Common Core kind of missed the ball on some of these things when parents were reading report cards. When my children were in elementary school at the time, and some of the boxes was like not assessed, not assessed, not assessed. You kind of like read it like, what is this? Tell me how my kid is, how he interacts with his or her peers. Is he on grade levels? Is he learning? Is she doing well socially?
That was a concern with our report cards as well.
Sometimes less is more, and I think as long as we keep that communication open and help parents feel that we empower them to be that first and most important teacher in children's lives, this can be a success and it takes a burden off of the staff for that one last reporting piece. But I think that comments section is critical because when I was a parent of young kids, I wanted to hear some specific feedback to my children, so I think that's an important piece.
I have one other question. Just on the second parent-teacher conference, why is that so much earlier in March? I mean, following how the other districts do it more towards mid to late. I mean, we have it in early February. Everybody else is doing it like later in March after the second trimester ends.
I can't remember the thought process there, Brian. That's certainly not set in stone by any means, Mr. Curtis. We could definitely revise that.
I think we're just basing it off of our current structure for parent-teacher conferences.
Yeah, is that, I can't tell you right now. Margie, you might know. Is that big in the contract as far as when those conferences are?
No.
So, yeah, I would try to make, look at it and make it something that makes more sense.
Closer to the halfway point in the school year might have been another thought process. I'm not certain. Valid question. The next report card committee meeting is actually tomorrow afternoon at 3:15, so we'll continue that conversation then and talk about other ways that we're revising the report card itself. And it's worth noting that the, will be quarters still at the secondary level of middle school and the high school. The lack of synchronicity between the elementary and the high school and middle school should not pose any problems, and that's pretty commonplace in these districts that do have trimesters at the elementary. Obviously, they don't have trimesters at the secondary level, so we don't envision any issues there.
Sam, you keep the camera on Chris until he goes to tell us a little bit about the upcoming conference.
Oh, yeah. Very briefly, we should have a copy of at least the agenda items. The agenda is still being crafted as far as the times and locations and all that fun stuff. One of my professional highlights. But we have a wealth of topic areas that have come from some surveys that have been administered, from conversations with our principals and leadership throughout the district as far as what is necessary. You'll see things from behavior intervention training in the morning that all faculty and staff will participate in just for 45 minutes as a whole district gathering. And then anything from, again, Project Lead the Way, our technology program, to some follow-ups on artificial intelligence and the PD that's been provided there. And that will be from Danielle Lambert, 8th grade social studies teacher. A lot of work with CKLA and Amplify as well as Ready Math. And Mike Atherton, Stop the Bleed Training, some workplace violence initiatives, secondary reading. It's a pretty all-encompassing agenda, so look forward to that day and confident it'll be productive and fruitful. And my thanks to the principals for their input, and it'll be here before we know it. Thankfully, it doesn't look like we're going to have any weather issues that would cancel that. That would be frustrating, but now that I said that, open mouth and cirque foot, but hopefully that does not happen.
Amazingly, we're actually still in pretty good shape. We have two snow days remaining and considering how tough this winter's been, I think we've got lucky. A lot of storms hit on weekends and holidays. It's early. I know it's early, especially these days. Seems like March is much more a winter month.
Yeah, shouldn't miss anything.
Thanks, Chris, for your leadership on that.
Yes, sir.
Any questions about the conference day? It's still in draft form and it's coming fast, so we'll be getting that out of staff. In the next few weeks, we're scheduling tenure discussions, both teaching staff, administrative staff. We have 20 people on the docket, so those meetings will take place, and those will be on the April board agenda. Some of those conversations, obviously, we're going to discuss in the executive session, but for the most part, we have, a vast majority of our staff are really happy to be giving, renting tenure to. Miko Building, this is interesting. I talked to you a while ago about the possibility of renting the Miko Building. Not a while ago, a couple of months ago. Nothing came of that because of the Dazny, is it Dazny that controls that? And they never got back to us on a waiver, so as far as I know, the prospect of renting that building is dead in the water. But I also told the board I would seek an appraisal on that. Talking with another superintendent, another district that has a vacant elementary school, he told me that his assessment and appraisal were so drastically far apart, I asked Kathy to give me a assessment of Miko. So, the assessed value of Miko currently is $1,721,300, but the full market value is $3,627,608, which means that's what the tax value would be to anything but a nonprofit. The assessed value, I'm guessing, excuse me, the appraisal on that, I'll be shocked if it's over $700,000. That's the problem that my colleague told me about, and I do, I don't believe this is going to be any different. I don't know any entity is going to come in and pay 3.6 million for that. I don't know if any entity is going to come in and pay 1.7 million for that building. It's a nice building, beautiful building, but I just don't see that. I think 5 to 750, I'm not an expert in real estate value, but I think that's about what somebody's going to come in and assess or appraise that building at. Now, people can challenge assessments. If you purchase a facility and you feel like it's wildly assessed at a value that is not commensurate with what it's really worth, you can challenge it, but I know in other districts, they've lost buyers because of that. So, I don't know if that's something that we should try to fight ahead of time. If the board not interested in selling it, it's fine, but part of my responsibilities are to keep bringing to light a asset that sits there unoccupied. I wish we could say, hey, BOSI's going to open it for X, Y, and Z reasons, but unfortunately, currently I do not see any prospect of that in the near future. That could change, but certainly not going to change, I don't believe, for '25, '26 school year. We do have a roof section left to replace. Once that's done, paint and a little bit of work here and there replaces a few ceiling tiles, and that building is in great shape, great shape. Can be used for a multitude of reasons. Got a brand-new secure vestibule. It'll have a new roof. It's got a brand-new water system. So, you want me to move ahead and get the appraisal on it, see what we get? Or do you want me to kind of start communicating with the county about the current assessed value? Obviously, we don't pay. We're a non-for-profit, so we don't pay that taxes on it.
What did Johnstown do with Jansen? Because that sold for, I mean, 800,000?
They know who they sold it to.
Six to eight, they sold it to a church.
There's a non-for-profit, so they're probably not paying taxes on it.
But did they do anything with the assessment first?
I don't know. You can find out.
Yeah, I don't think so, but I can.
I know the district is, oh, yesterday they're referring to, and there's the DH Robbins Building, which is a nice little elementary school in the village of St. Johnsville. And they've had people, entities come in and look at it, excited about it, and saw that price and what it's appraised at, excuse me, what it's assessed at, and it wasn't congruent with the value that they saw in that building.
Was Gleeb Street purchased by BOSI's or do they just run it?
I would guess they just run it. Wait, they're not there anymore. Yeah, they're not there, I'm sorry.
Where's PTEC?
It's still at Gleeb. Well, I'm thinking of the one...
Jansen.
You're thinking of Jansen.
I'm thinking of Jansen. So, Gleeb, so yeah, BOSI's, I'm guessing, just rents Gleeb from Johnstown. Yeah, BOSI's won't, they're not buying any more facilities that I'm aware of. I'd love if they bought Miko. But I just, you know, I don't like sitting on an asset as nice as that facility just seen it unutilized. It's not good for the building to not be occupied. We put money into it, we're receiving nothing back out of it. It's unfortunate that we couldn't make something happen with the Family Council Center.
They still want it.
I haven't talked to Mike Hunchman since I was told that, you know, that wasn't really feasible. Because I think they were interested in purchasing, and when we looked at with Dazny, it was like, it's not happening. I know Bob Smalling made some phone calls and nothing that, I've heard nothing back from Dazny on any kind of waiver for that. So, I don't know if the timeline is, I think they're hoping for July 1 for the Family Council Center, but if something could change, I think that they would still be interested. Well, I don't think it would be too much to get an appraisal on that building, so it'd be nice to just hear what we got, and at the same time, maybe we can educate ourselves and see what we can do and maybe challenge. and see what we can do and maybe challenge the assessed value. The full assessed value at 3.6 million is pretty crazy. Jumbotron update, I'm sure a lot of people who drop, bring their kids up to the middle school and high school wondered about those jumbotrons that sit dormant. It's like a monument to man stupidity. I shouldn't say it's, they were wonderful when they're working, but they have not worked well since we purchased them. Those are all new screens with 2024, 25 technology, but there's still some glitches and I'm told that it's wiring in the high school, the middle school is pretty much ready to go. We've been working with our construction managers. Kathy's now talking with Patrick Pastero from Gervin Falazzo about writing a letter to the company saying, you should be covering the costs of Brian Skiff and our people fixing it. We're purchasing lifts in order to get up on that sign. I mean, those things are brand new and they've never properly worked. They look great when they're operational, but. Yeah, it's all flash, no back so far, so hopefully we can get better. That said, most, the capital projects obviously wound way down. There's a few small punchless items, trim here and there and a few vestibules. There was some concern about the high school stage. I went and looked at it with Bob and Sydney last week and they did redo that to the specs as they were written. It's a black matte stage, you're on it more than anybody in this room. They get scraped up. You drag props around on the stage floor, they're going to get marked up and it's the nature of the business. You can't see the floor per se from the crowd. The matte black was to diminish the reflection of, of stage lighting. When you're standing on a stage, you look down and because it's a new, newly painted floor, you notice every scrape mark. In four or five years, it'll be so scraped up that it'll just kind of look that, that real nice weathered stress look that everybody's looking for. So I did go up there with Christina, or excuse me, with Bob and Sydney and I sat in chairs and, and moved around on it. It does not just mark up and move the paint. The paint is solid, it's, it's adhered and well, it's just going to show items that are dragged across it, is what it is. If people are concerned, you go up on it, you're like, God, this doesn't look like it was just done. It is, it's what we paid for, it's what we asked for, it's what we got. So I'm, I'm not fighting anything else with that. And like I said, I sat all over the auditorium and you can't really see it. Any questions about that? Also, they, I don't know how the board feels about this, I support it. A preliminary conversation, we start having a conversation about the next capital project. I know it's like, Dave, we just finished this one, but districts that manage their facilities well, pretty much start, do these things almost on a four or five year cycle. We have roofs in this building that we're coming up on the warranty being up. As I said, Miko has active leaks as we speak and unfinished parts. There's always things to do when you have seven buildings as we do that are the size that these are, flat roofs in the northeast. A new freezer in the high school, that walk-in freezer is, has reached end of life. A lot of kitchen equipment has reached end of life. There's always things to do in our schools, so I don't, I'm not sure about the scope, size of this next project. I don't think it will be an enormous project that we put together, but we, we had a discussion about getting together and certainly the board would have to be part of that conversation leading up to possibly an early December vote, 2025, sitting in state ed's hands for better part of 30, 40 weeks, seems like these days. So we'll see, you're looking at 26, 27 construction season. Excuse me, 27, 28 construction season. Any questions or concerns about that? I'm sure Demo wants a turf field. I don't know, we'll see what the, what can be spent on Park Terrace. Our football field's certainly in rough shape at Park Terrace. This past fall, once the, once the frost hit, all the grass died. The only thing that was there was crabgrass and it was, it looks rough. So I'm not saying that we should turf that field, but we need to do something with it. I don't know about your baseball field, the baseball field looks pretty good, Mike.
infield looks good.
Any questions about that? Last thing is the GESD district goal review. You know, we gave, we, we had a retreat last summer and we went over these goals and if you flip over your agenda, we kept our goals pretty simple and we pretty much don't think these goals are going to change in the future. Obviously, the subheadings and district, smaller priorities, but our, our goals of relationships, scholastic achievement, post-secondary, career readiness is going to be our driving everything we do for the foreseeable future. You know, I, I think we're making a lot of headway when it comes to relationships with entities such as Glover's Education Foundation, the library, the PTA, our, our city government, our county government agencies. Building those relationships with families is the most important thing we can do. We just had a conversation about report cards and I think our elementary staff does a, a very good job of doing it. I think it's something we can improve upon as an organization for sure. The Glover's Education Foundation is, Chris and Courtney Wood, Nancy Brown have been working on a survey to send to the parents of our, mostly our elementary, middle school staff, children regarding our attendance and trying to act, ascertain from parents why their kids' attendance isn't great. And Chris, they did a nice job of creating like a dropdown menu that could just kind of hit a couple of, I don't know if it's, can we do it electronic or you're hoping to do it hardcover? So it'll be electronic survey, easy to get feedback, even if only 50 people do it, it's going to tell us something about what people feel about what, maybe why their kids are missing school. You're going to hear everything from bullying by other kids, by staff, you're going to hear the lack of cleanliness. There's those, those are excuses. I tell you right now, our, our staff, our teachers, our administrators, our support staff work hard to keep kids safe. They know it's the highest priority and nobody wants kids being harassed on their watch. So when I have those conversations with parents and they're not happy because their kid got in trouble and they start talking about bullying, I kind of end that conversation pretty quick because in my experience, bullying is very, very rare in its pure form. It's usually conflict and, and the word bullying is thrown around way too much in our, in American education conversations in the last 10 years. It's far more often conflict. It might not be 50/50, it might be 60, 40, it might be 70, 30, but there's usually two sides to these issues and bullying in its purest form does not exist. I shouldn't say does not exist, it's very rare. It's very rare and it usually sticks out like a sore thumb. Kids are intolerant of it when they see it and staff members are certainly intolerant when they see it. So yeah, I hope to improve that dialogue with parents in our community because I do not think bullying is a problem. Do kids, are they occasionally mean to each other or all too often sometimes mean to each other? Sure. That's part of, that's part of our charge is to help them be better citizens and kinder to each other. But to default to, oh, this, there's some bullying and those allowed in Glover's, that's, that's a ridiculous assertion, so. I think we could do a better job, I personally could do a better job of trying to get parents in to talk with us. We've talked about holding coffee houses with parents and I failed to do that. So I think that's something I have to do, whether it's held here, the library, somewhere in the community and see who would come. I'm not just going to assume people aren't going to come. So I think we have to schedule some of those in the near future and, and see what kind of feedback we can get at a personal level. I think the PTA and the Glover's Education Foundation are going to do great work in trying to get out to those communities, neighborhoods. We're talking about having a, a event at the DuBois Housing Authority, trying to interface with parents. You know, we did, a couple of years ago, did a nice job of using a map of the city and pinpointing where our most at-risk scholars lived due to attend, for attendance purposes and try to target those communities. We use that information to dictate our current busing schedule throughout the city that the board provides. So I think as far as relationships, we're trying to move the needle, but hopefully parents buy into what we're doing here and how important it is for their children to be successful. Safety's the highest priority, but you know, ratcheting up to rigor and getting them to be kind and, and work hard and, and think beyond the perceived limitations of what they can achieve. That's our job as educators. Our collective charge is to help kids break through any perceived barriers to what they can be in life, what they can do with their lives. It's pretty important work. I can't think of any more important work than that. That goes right along with what we're trying to do with scholastic achievement, science of reading, the programs in the elementary, the MTSS work, the efforts across the district to raise our collective instructional efficacy. That's, that's the, the core mission of what we're here for. All indications are that across millions of studies evidently, or thousands of studies, I'm not sure what the number was, that collective instructional advocacy is the most important thing a school system can do to help children be successful. So that's us owning what we're doing here and I think we're doing a good job of, of having those conversations and really using data to inform our instruction, trying to provide quality professional development, support our new hired peoples through mentoring programs with fellow teachers, with frequent oversight from administration, with walkthroughs, honest feedback and, and formal observations and hopefully constant communication about what we can do to improve ourselves each and every day. And post-secondary and career readiness, that's a piece I think is still a little bit of a rope of sand. I think we're moving along, but out of these three goals, I feel like that's probably the one that we have the most work to do on. And yeah, we talked about trying to create, not necessarily career days in the elementary, but we, we had this conversation, Chris and I, regionally to have a curriculum kind of baked in and I think CKLA does it a little bit with introducing careers to kids, but working regionally to try to bring to light what is, what careers are available locally. What can people do to aspire? There's, there's amazing technologies used in our community. You don't need to go to New York City or to Boston, to Toronto to find state-of-the-art equipment and, and the latest technology applied to the private sector, public sector, hospitals, you name it, engineering. So there's a lot of opportunities right here and I think that's something that in education we need to constantly be mindful of. It's not just achievement on a test and signing a letter or a number grade to a child. It is to inspire them and open doors for them so they can start using their imagination and getting excited about what they can possibly do with their lives. If there's any other goals that the board wants us to focus on, these are pretty big, broad umbrella, vague goals. Some people want measurable goals and certainly things like attendance and, and discipline and, you know, those are always on everybody's fingertips to try to address. I think our building principals particularly do a great job of constantly reminding us where they were last year with these numbers and what we're doing. And student support services as well, looking at the number of suspended special education students or the suspensions in general. We're constantly having those conversations, but you know, certainly I think when they do the reports, they typically present that information as well. Any questions on the update as provided on these district goals and if there's something you think we need to work on, we're all ears. Okay. I think that concludes my report. I do have a number of items in executive session, primarily contract discussions, personnel. I think that says it all. It's what, it's what it always is. Thank you. Any questions? All right, next item is a student board member report.
All right, thank you. Right now, everything at the high school is overall, it's going okay. Right now, we're stuck in the third quarter lull. That's when everything slows down right after winter break to spring break. It feels like an eternity, but hey, I'm grateful for the conference day. So right now, it's a little bit that. Winter sports are done. Our board's competed in sectionals, that was awesome to see. And then we also have spring sports beginning on the 17th. I was asked to report this, that our high school cheer team did not make it to competition this year, which is definitely unfortunate. They said it was due to an eligibility and the coaches didn't want to take a small team to the competition. So that's unfortunate to hear that our cheer team did not get to make it to competition this year, but that's all, that's all I know. As of right now, no one uses a yander pouch, but they work. I have not seen anybody use a yander pouch. I don't even know if they're even at the door anymore, but I haven't seen anybody on their phone. Just the threat alone of having a yander pouch and if you take your phone out, you're going to get yandered, is doing a great job. Phone policies, it's great. It's great. I don't see phones anymore. That's about it. Nobody uses them, but there's no phones. Some really good news, I'm happy to report about our Project Lead the Way Cardboard Derby at Oak Mountain. On Saturday, March 1st, our program went up to Oak Mountain and we had two teams compete. We had the X-Wing and the Cybertruck. Both teams won, which was great. The X-Wing took overall best creativity and which, and there's two categories, which was best creativity and best overall speed. X-Wing won for creativity and the Cybertruck won for overall speed. The Cybertruck did take out a few people, I'm not going to lie. It was, it was hard to stop. It was small, but it was powerful. It took a few people out at the bottom of the mountain, sent for the X-Wing, had a pretty large wingspan and we knocked over the owner of Oak Mountain. That was something, but I'm happy to report another win for Glover'sville. It was also great, it was a wonderful outreach as well. All the students there, great civility, they were very professional with everybody around them. It was also a great engaging event. There was a ton of parents there, a ton of community involvement. It was a really, really, really great thing to represent Glover'sville High School. Another great thing to represent Glover'sville High School is Beetlejuice Junior. March 7th, 8th and 9th, I'm going to plug it, Beetlejuice Junior. It is a really great show. I heard the kid that plays Beetlejuice, I hear he's really good. It's just through the grapevine. But it's really great. Friday, 7 o'clock, Saturday, 7 o'clock, Sunday, 2 o'clock. Tickets are $5 for students, $8 for adults. It really is a great show. It's probably the most fun show I've been in, so. Totally recommend going there. And the Drama Club wants to say thank you for the psych, for the psycholarama curtain because it really, really, really lights up the stage, collects all that light and it just, it transforms the space instead of just being a black backdrop to really creating all that mood lighting and all the effects that we want. So thank you again for that psycholarama curtain, we appreciate that. And this one, I just added on there, today was Read Across America Day in the elementary schools. That was great. Really, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, I'm glad, I thank you for bringing it up. I lowered down and I didn't mention it.
I was invited to read and I took a look at their schedule. They had a ton of awesome activities planned throughout the day. Lot of great guest speakers in there. We had Sheriff Giardino, Amanda Nellis, Chief of the Fire Department. We had two of our SROs, we had, well, we, our one SRO and I can't think of the other one's name. They're both, they're both in and out. Okay, just a ton of great, great people in there. Dr. Ojescy, you were in there, Mr. Holler, you were there. The kids enjoyed the books, just looking at their schedule, awesome activities throughout the day. So thank you to everybody that planned that. It's a great thing to be in our district and lunch is good, so that's about it. Thank you guys for your time. Any questions?
Good luck on the show.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing up the Read Across America because I want to plug to Park Terrace and Kingsborough staff, rolled out the red carpet with, to the guest readers and the kids were awesome. I read three Bernstein Bear books. Brought me back. I even told them that I used to read Report Card Trouble to my kids, so Kingsborough ordered Report Card Trouble. So I got to read it. I, I really didn't need to read it, I memorized it. Swimming in D soup. So thank you. Nice job, report.
Next, I, we have the recommended items, 7.01 through 18.13. Any questions, comments, concerns? Motion to approve all those by John, seconded by Kelly. All in favor on that? All right, and then a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract and personnel items, motion by Sharon, seconded by Kevin. All in favor on that? All right, thank you everyone for coming this evening. There'll be no action taken after the executive session. Have a good night.